Could I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, April 21st, 2022. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the April 4th, 2022 minutes. Any of the board members have any comments, corrections? Hearing none, what's the request of the board?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 4th meeting.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Aye.
Okay. We have a motion made in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, those minutes have been approved. We do have a special permit on 22 Bellevue Street, and they have requested that be continued to May 16th because they have to perfect notice. So that matter on 22 Bellevue Street. Maggie McHale has applied for the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals seeking special permit and variance approval at the above address. The applicant seeks to convert the existing two-family residential building into a three-family residential building. The subject property is located in a traditional multifamily zoning district. It proposes requires special permit approval from the Planning Board pursuant to Article 12.1 and a residential structure on three units. They need a variance approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals for Section 6.1 for off-street parking requirement and off-street parking dimensions, and 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit and minimum open space per dwelling unit requirement from the Zoning Board of Appeals. As indicated, the applicant's requested it continues to May 16th to perfect notice. The board have any problems with continuing the matter to May 16th?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the matter to the May 16th Planning Board meeting.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Oh, a second.
Motion is made in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, that matter is continued. So tonight, we also have a site plan review and a special permit for St. Louis School, and we also have a master plan steering committee. I see our Assistant City Manager, Kristia McCall, is with us this evening, and she's going to be doing the presentation on the master plan. So if the board has no objections, I'd like to take that out of order and entertain Ms. McCall to give us an update on the new master plan, if you will, please.
Thank you, Chairman Linehan. I appreciate you all having me on. I'm pleased to be greeted and honored to be here for part of the agenda. I'm just here to introduce the master plan for the Board of Appeals to the planning Board. We are the properties here involved in this.
Oh, yeah, there's no microphone.
I'll start again. Thank you, Chairman Linehan, for allowing me to go ahead of the next project. I know there's a butter, so I'll be quick. Oh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So thank you for having me. The DPD is embarking on an update to our master plan called Resilient Lowell 2040. We're in the process of securing a consultant to help us with that process. We anticipate, once we secure the consultant, we'll have a kickoff this late spring, early summer, and we imagine this will take approximately two years. We think this is a very exciting time to embark on an update to our master plan, considering the transition in our city administration, but also in our elected officials. And so tonight, I am here in front of the Planning Board asking your consideration to appoint one of you as a working member of our steering committee. The Master Plan Steering Committee is a volunteer committee intended to provide a platform for public input on decisions and practices related to the master planning process. We anticipate the committee members to work with city staff to oversee the master planning process and assist with the supervision of the consultant team. The steering committee is not responsible for writing or for managing the consultant team. We really want the steering committee to help us guide equitable, accessible, and transparent community engagement. And so in addition to soliciting resumes and interest from community members, we really want this to be a 20 to 30 steering committee that's reflective of the diverse community that we have. We do have some statutory positions that we want to make sure. So we're going to have a member of the Planning Board, or we would like to have a member of the Planning Board, a member of the Zoning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Historic Board, and other boards and commissions throughout the city. There will also be city council members, both at district and at large, school committee members, and hopefully students at the high school as our statutory members. Yeah, so that's... So I'm hoping one of you will be willing to serve on this committee. We anticipate quarterly meetings, whether in person or virtually, depending on what we think is easier. We don't anticipate that it'd be a huge lift. It's really supposed to help us guide the process to make sure that we're reaching every resident of the city and that we're documenting all the different neighborhoods and stakeholders and communities that we have. This would not... Participating on the steering committee would not preclude any member of the Planning Board to participate as a resident in any public meeting or in any feedback or on a working group, which we anticipate... We'll have more information once we get going.
Okay, thank you very much. Any of the board members have any questions for Ms. McCall?
Clear.
No? Okay. So you need one board member from our board?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Jerry Fichette. I know he's worked on the master plan in the city several times in the past with other planning staff, so I know he has experience on that matter, and plus, he's our representative from NemcoG, so he has a lot of experience from the other cities and towns in the Mall Mac Valley. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Fichette. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made in the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Do you accept Mr. Fichette?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to members of the committee. I look forward to it. I was involved in 2021... I'm sorry, 2001 is when we put together the master plan at that point in time and the rezoning that went along with that. And as a result of that, the Pawtucketville Master Plan, which, you know, we have different versions, but I was basically the piston behind the engine on that, and obviously working on the regional planning with NemcoG. So I look forward to the process, which is very important to get citizen engagement and getting all parties heard, so appreciate it. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan review and a special permit for St. Louis School, 72-74 Bovet Street, and 253 West Sixth Street. ZR Development Group, LLC, has applied to the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals to redevelop the existing St. Louis School building into 19 residences with 24 off-street parking spaces. The application requires site plan review under Section 11.4 to construct more than three dwelling units and special permit approval for the conversion of an existing historic school under Section 8.1. The applicant also requires variance approval under Section 6.1 for relief from off-street parking requirement, Section 5.1 for relief from the land area per dwelling unit requirement and usable open space requirement, and under Section 8.134 for relief from the minimum square footage requirement and for any other relief as requested on the Lowell zoning code. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of the offices of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing ZR Development Group, LLC. The principals of ZR Development Group are Jim Zorvis, who is here with me tonight, and Ryan Rourke. Ryan is not available tonight. Both Jim and Ryan are lifelong residents of the city of Lowell. They are... They own quite a bit of property in the city and have done some developments in the city. They're very responsible developers and very good landlords. Also with me tonight is Gary Thomas of North Point Construction. Gary's part of our design construction team, design-build team. We're just getting word that our engineer is having difficulty getting on the system, getting onto the Zoom, so it's unlikely he's going to be with us, but we'll get through that part of the presentation. As the chairman mentioned, we're requesting a site plan approval pursuant to Section 11.4 and a special permit pursuant to 11 point... I'm sorry, pursuant to 8.1 of the city of Lowell zoning ordinance in order to redevelop this property at 253 West Sixth Street and 72-74 Bovet Street. The parcels are located in the TMU zoning district and contain approximately 16,386 square feet of land with a now vacant three-story schoolhouse building, which was the former site of the St. Louis Elementary School and part of the St. Louis Parish, which is now closed and encompasses basically the entire block adjacent to this property. The school building, as I mentioned, is located at 72 Bovet Street and the parking lot fronts on West Sixth Street. Bovet Street is a one-way street running up from West Sixth Street, running from the school property up to West Sixth Street. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing schoolhouse building into 19 residential units with associated parking. The proposed square footage of the units is appropriately... are appropriately sized and consistent with what we're seeing coming online in the city in terms of residential units. The breakdown of the units include the first floor, which is five studio apartments and two one-bedroom apartments. The second and third floor have identical floor plans. They include two one-bedroom apartments and four two-bedroom apartments on each floor. As I indicated, the units are appropriately sized, however, because we're asking for a special permit pursuant to Article 8.1, which has a square footage requirement, we need to request a variance from the ZBA for the square footage of our units. The neighborhood adjacent to this property consists of other St. Louis Parish properties, such as the church directory, the church grounds. There's a mix of single, two, and multifamily properties throughout the neighborhood. There are a few parks and playgrounds within a short walking distance to this property, and West Sixth Street is a main corridor that runs from Bridge Street to Aiken Ave. There are several LRTA bus stops along West Sixth Street and some at the beginning of the site and just after the site. If the board recalls, we attended a pre-hearing a couple months back. We have tried to incorporate the board's suggestions at that pre-hearing into our updated latest plans. We've also met with the two neighborhood... Centerville neighborhood groups over the last couple weeks, and I'll let the neighborhood groups speak for themselves, but my impression of the resistance is that the neighborhood is concerned that we're going to be putting too many cars on the street, you know, so we're taking up too many on-street parking spaces. Because of the... We're proposing 19 residential units here. The bylaws require two parking spaces per dwelling unit, which would get us at 38 off-street parking spaces. The plan that we submitted shows 24 parking spaces. That's about the best we can do, so we'll be seeking relief from the ZBA for the 14 off-street parking spaces that we can't provide. We believe the lack of off-street parking is mitigated by the size of the units and the demographics of the prospective tenants, which is young professionals and small families. It's also in the applicant's best interest to ensure that there's not a parking problem at the site. Parking problems will lead to unhappy tenants and vacant units, so they'll do their best to manage any potential parking issues. In addition to the 24 off-street parking spaces that will be provided for, we've provided the board with a transportation demand management plan, which indicates that there'll be interior and exterior bicycle racks for any residents that intend to use a bike as their mode of transportation. And as I mentioned, the LRTA has several stops along West Sixth Street and in very close proximity to the site. The transportation demand plan also references ride shared programs, which are readily available and taken advantage of often by residents. The applicant does understand that the redevelopment that we're proposing will add to the on-street parking situation in the neighborhood, but we feel strongly that the benefits of the redevelopment outweigh any potential parking impacts. My narrative also makes mention of the on-street parking along Bovet Street directly along this... the frontage of this property, which is currently underutilized, and that folds well... that rings true of the... along West Sixth Street from Bunker Hill Ave to Bovair Street. You know, I've gone by this property a dozen times or more. We've taken some pictures that we can share with the board at some point here tonight that shows that that area is essentially underutilized. So we feel that the... We understand we're adding some on-street parking to the neighborhood, but we don't think it's going to be all that impactful. In addition to the special permit and the site plan review that we're requiring... requesting from this board, we'll be requesting a variance for lack of off-street parking, as I mentioned, for relief from Section 5.1 for lot area per dwelling unit usable open space. And as previously mentioned, we need variance for the size of the square footage of the units pursuant to 8.1.3. My narrative goes into good detail with regard to how this development meets the criteria for issuance of a special permit, but very briefly, the redevelopment of this building will stabilize this property for decades to come. It will provide much-needed housing to the city. It will bring tax revenue to the city, and currently, as the current use of the property provides zero tax dollars to the city. And the applicant is significantly improving the site in terms of adding usable open space and creating landscaping, which is currently non-existent on the property. Also, there'll be a decrease of impervious pavement on the property by up to 10%, likely a little bit more than that, which will reduce the stress on the city's storm water system. The deep... You know, at this point, I'd like to take a few minutes to go through the DPD staff comments, which were generally favorable. So starting with the site plan review comments. Comment number three... One and two speak for themselves, but comment number three, as the plan indicates, we're proposing to beautify the site with landscaping and removing the chain-link fence along Bovair Street. That will certainly improve the site. Comment number four, A, B, and C, the applicant would be agreeable to the proposed condition by providing more detail on its landscape plan. Comment number four D, so this deals with landscape, open space, and the parking area. We feel we meet that... We can meet that criteria, and we will demonstrate that on a revised site plan. You know, we are... The lot is, you know, completely impervious pavement right now, so we're doing our best to create as much landscaping as we can, and it's certainly going to be a significant enhancement to what is there. Comment number five, the applicant intends to install bike racks, both interior and exterior. If the board feels that we need a bike rack that holds 19 bikes, we can certainly do that, but it's the applicant's experience that not all residents will use a bike as their mode of transportation. Comment number six, we're agreeable to submitting a detailed lighting plan prior to applying for the building permit, and we can work with DPD staff to get to that point. Comment number seven, we agree that the snow storage areas are modest, and the applicant intends to remove the snow whenever necessary from the site, and we would be agreeable to a condition of that nature. Comment number eight, the applicant will screen the dumpster pursuant to Section 6.6. There's no issue there, and that will be demonstrated on any revised site plan. Comment number nine just confirms that the exterior improvements to the building will be beneficial. We agree with that wholeheartedly. Comment number 10, reference the possibility of the awning in the front entrance overhanging into the public right of way. We'll confirm that. If that is the case, we will request a license from the city council so that that can exist. So those were the comments with regard to the site plan. The special permit comments, comment number one just reiterates that our narrative adequately addresses the redevelopment plan and meets the special permit granting criteria. Comment number two confirms that this proposal achieves the goals of Sustainable Lowell 2025 by converting the schoolhouse to a multifamily residential property in this multifamily zoning district. The variance comments, we'll address those, certainly with the ZBA, but it's worth talking about those as well. Comment number one indicates that the parking ratio is 1.26. We talked about that. We understand that we don't have two parking spaces per dwelling unit, but we're trying to do our best to redevelop this property. Comment number two, the staff states that the benefit of additional housing created by the project outweigh the potential challenges created by the parking situation. We talked about... I talked about that, and we agree with that wholeheartedly. Comment number three, staff has no concern with the size of the units which are being proposed. Again, we'll be requesting a variance pursuant to 8.1.3 from the Zoning Board. Comment number four, we confirm that the board... So we can confirm for this board that we're going to be using that outdoor space as usable open space for the tenants. I think that's a great commodity for the tenants. Comment number five just concludes... The DPD concludes that the housing is the highest and best reuse of this property. The engineering comments that were provided are also reasonable. We have no issue complying with those comments. A lot of those are typical. Couple of the comments speak to installing new granite curbs at the drive opening, no problem there. Remove and reset the existing curbs. I think there's several layers of pavement there, but we'll work with the engineering department on that. Replace the sidewalks along Bovet Street with new concrete sidewalks to city standards. We can certainly accommodate that request, and speaks to the required granite curbing. So... And of course, if anything's damaged by our redevelopment of this property, we will reconstruct it to city standards. So that's my presentation. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Gary, who will go through the architecturals and the floor plans, and, you know, then he'll throw it back to me. Yeah?
Thank you, board members. My name is Gary Thomas from North Point Construction Management, and we've been working with ZR Development on this project as well as a few others in the city, one of them particularly on Fletcher Street that is already underway. And Jim and his partners do a fantastic job in making sure that they do the right thing for the community and the projects themselves. So he spent a lot of time with us, kind of going through the different design aspects and the layout of the interior of the facility. So as Attorney Geary mentioned, downstairs in the lower level, there's a handful of studio-style. Majority of the units are one and two bedrooms. Facade-wise on the exterior, basically, our intent is to leave most of the windows and everything, obviously still making sure that they all meet code compliance for means of egress, et cetera. But we're trying to keep the look of the existing building and the brick materials, but in order to just sort of change them and get them a little more contemporary rather than just an older brick building, we're looking to stain the exterior of the building. So we've done this on various locations throughout New Hampshire and Massachusetts. It's a particular stain product that goes over masonry units. Looking to do the front canopy as sort of a copper-type finish. We kind of reviewed a lot of this probably two months ago, right, Jim?
Yeah.
With the board themselves, so historically, you know, it's still going to kind of comply with everything that's going on around the whole church area and the school district, but I think in general, it's a fantastic use for the property. The high ceilings, the... all the windows, a lot of bright light into the building, so we think we've done our best to allow the back of the property to, for, you know, families and people living on the facility to have sort of an outdoor grill, just sort of a green space to be hanging out, rather than just a sea of pavement, as well as Attorney Geary had mentioned, so... Does anybody have any questions about the finishes?
So on the site plan, we... Couple of things I wanted to point out. So the property's on the corner of West Sixth and Bovet Street. We are intending that the... any tenants access the property through West Sixth Street and then exit the property onto Bovet Street. And as I said, Bovet's a one-way street, so it runs right up to West Sixth. So there's a little... You know, there's not a lot of need to go into the neighborhood here. So I think that's an efficient traffic flow for the site. We also show these... The site plan shows the landscape along the edge of the street, running basically the length of the parking area, which, right now, is... there's just an old rusty chain-link fence there. So the landscaping... And we will, you know, I think we show five trees here. The landscape plan will significantly beautify the lot. So, you know, as far as the site plan, that's all the comments I have. I believe that we meet the criteria for approval of the site plan and issuance of the special permit. Ultimately, we comply with the goals of the city master plan and Sustainable Lowell 2025 by providing housing and reusing this type of a structure into multifamily housing. So as such, we request approval from this board, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board members might have.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
At this point in time, does anybody like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Yes, come to the microphone, please, and just give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sean Levek. I live at 10 Kearney Square. I think that the city just needs more housing. I don't see any other way around it. I think that it's an abandoned building. It should be redeveloped for people. I don't see any reason why it shouldn't be that way.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name's Corey Robinson. I live on 5 West 10th Street. I'd like to say first, I do think this project is a great project for the neighborhood. It is. We've... They've taken the time to come and speak to the neighborhood groups, as mentioned. We do need housing, but we are talking about market rate housing right currently. One of the things that I personally have heard from my neighbors of Centerville is that it was originally proposed to us, this was going to contain all off-street. They've worked with the neighborhood. There was concerns about going into the neighborhood. They made the adjustments on the original plan to enter and exit off of West Sixth, which, again, I think it's a great group, a great team. They've been more than willing to work with the neighborhood. I do commend them. I also commend the fact that they want to keep it as close to the original design and look, so it fits the characteristic of the neighborhood. So I think it is overall a great project. The number-one problem that I'm seeing is, though, 14 parking spaces on-street. So now, average length of a vehicle is 14.7 feet. You're looking at 205 feet of vehicles potentially on what is already very densely populated. I mean, we're struggling in Centerville, as is with 4% CSO combined sewer overflow separation already. So in addition to that, we're currently working on a plan to produce regular street sweeping in all areas of the city to help alleviate some of this storm overflow, water sewage, keep our basins clean. You're throwing potentially another 205 feet of vehicles on the street, which, it's already a headache. Winter operations, street sweeping, all of these things come into play, especially in an area that we're discussing that you're lucky... You can circle the block four times over on most days, and you're lucky if you can find a spot, as is. I mean, I keep hearing the benefits of the project outweigh the quality of life. I don't understand that. I mean, benefits outweigh quality of life, but then you ride off and don't have to put up with the parking mess that's left behind. Again, I think it's a great project, but I think this on-street parking is definitely not something that that area can accommodate, and if it does accommodate it, it's leading to greater problems down the line. Again, winter operations, snow removal, all of those things come into play. Street sweeping schedules, all those things come into play, especially with 4% of Centerville being separated out with combined sewage overflow. being separated out with combined sewage overflow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Yes?
Hi, my name is Sandy McNamara, president of Centerville Community Coalition and also a resident. And again, I was all favor of the development being apartments, while needed in the city. But again, quality of life, and if you look at the school, every abut is at least a two, three, four, six family building. Two that abut him is six family with no on-street parking. The one behind that one that abuts him is a very large three family that are three or four bedroom units with no onsite parking. And if you go further around, it's the same way. Buildings that abut that property in that L either have, like the one right in the corner, they have a two family, two cars on the street, two cars in their driveway. The one in the corner has four cars in the driveway, four cars on the street. And then you go to the last one, and they have two cars if they can get them in, and then the rest of the building has to find space on the street. Directly across from their parking lot is a bus stop. So, that four family has to find alternate parking, because again, they have a parking space that only allows four cars, but it's supposed to be a four unit, but it's a six. And the same with new buildings. So, there's no, nowhere to park. And the thing with this is, I understood the 19 in the beginning. And then when they had different numbers through different meetings, they were in our meetings twice, and had different stories in both meetings. But again, we're thinking they want 14 just for their residence. How about boyfriend, girlfriend, husband, wife, visitors? Where? There's just no way in the world to even accommodate with the 14. And I was amazed, and again, housing is great, but at CNAG's meeting, they discussed what the price of the units were going to be. And when they discussed the price of the units, I'm like, well, it's sure not low income, that's for sure, because they were very high. And the attorney can probably re-speak that at the 14 for the studios, and went up to 18 for the one room, and then what was it, over two grand for the two bedrooms? Again, we, the population is very, very tight in that end of Centerville. And to put in another large apartment complex without accommodating themselves, if they were to, and this is the way I believe, we all believe in the room, if they were to lower the units and have their own onsite parking, remarkable. Everybody would be happy. But they don't want to bend. They need the 19 to become millionaires and to make their money, or it's not worth their effort. And that's what we understood in all the meetings they were to us. So, again, I don't think that's fair to quality of life, that the almighty dollar will come first versus the quality of life that already is squeezed so tight already. There's daily, and people can contest, like he said, you can go around the block four times to find a spot. God forbid you park in somebody's spot that they think they own it, because you're not going to have tires in the morning. It's a battle every single day around that neighborhood. I did give a petition that I went around with. I hope you have a copy.
Nope.
With photos.
If you could pass that up, please.
And that plan all around the building. That shows how many vehicles and blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
And.
Thank you.
Again, it's, and that is, you come after supper time, and that's what you're going to see. And I have a walker, so to walk long distance, some of those streets, I had to go on Bullview, my own street, when I got to the end by the school, I had to walk on the street because cars are parked on the sidewalk. Same what you'll see on Beauvais right in front of the school. They're parked up on the sidewalk as well as on the street. And again, you come out of Bullview and the traffic, and they block his driveway, as a matter of fact, on West Sixth Street. Once it's opened, I'm sure they won't, but for now, they do. And that's that apartment that's on the corner is who blocks, and that's blocked every night. So, again, if there's anything I forgot, please, anybody let me know. And again, it, you just don't, it definitely is the quality of life, not only trying to make the quality worse with more fights or whatever with trying to fit cars where there's nowhere to put them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Good evening, gentlemen. Ellen Wright, I own 92 Beauvais Street. I'm an attorney. My office is in Tewksbury. I also have property on Hildreth Street. I would like to let the council know, my two children attended St. Louis, my older boy attended Greenhenge School, and I have lived on Beauvais Street for 15 years. I think an important point that needs to be made is a, number one, the safety of the neighborhood children. Greenhenge School is right on the corner, okay? My boys go up and down the streets of Centerville pretty regularly during the summer, after school hours. I will tell you, my little one was hit by a car on Hildreth Street the summer before last. His bicycle was totaled. It's a miracle he walked away with his life. You add to the parking conundrum that already exists in Centerville, and children will get hurt. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And I think that this is one very obvious issue that is even more important than money. You cannot replace a child's life. Once it's gone, it's gone. Let's talk about the snowstorms in the winter, okay? How about the blizzards, the nor'easters, when there's two, three feet of snow on the ground? People are at each other's throats over the parking. Then what? Neighborhood violence, lower socioeconomic strata? It happens. People lose tempers. Turn on Channel 5, Channel 7, road rage. Add to the parking problem, just see what happens. Just wait. Think on that one. And to the gentleman from Kearney Square who spoke in favor, I agree we need housing. You won't find anyone in this room who disagrees, okay? He's clearly unaware of the gravity of the parking problem in Centerville. It's not a joke. Not a joke. Housing is a problem, but parking is a bigger one. That's all.
Anybody else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, through you to the members of the planning board. My name is Regina Fata Conti. I live in Bunker Hill Ave. Single family home, and I own no other property in the city of Lowell. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to address you this evening. I made a few notes, and I'll let you start off by saying, green space is good space. And in a neighborhood where that is a difficulty, you can see Boy Scouts playing on the St. Louis lot, you can see people walking their dogs there. And gentlemen, you can also see an opportunity for National Night Out to have an evening with the neighborhood. Parking is already a problem as my, as the residents have indicated. The drop-off in the pickup around the opening and the closing time of the Greenhenge School is, it's at crisis point. Let me just also say that the, you had mentioned how you were going to have an entrance and an exit would be very specific. So, my, I don't know if the planning board would allow me, I'll just state the question, and then the planning board can ask the members. I'd like to know how the entrance and exit will be policed specifically, meaning no other, meaning folks aren't going to be using the entrance as the exit and vice versa. And the fence issue, gentlemen, the fence would be remaining, keeping the fence might actually be a positive. Upgrade the fence, that might be able to ensure a entrance and exit specific to the designated areas that the developers are creating. I also would agree with the members of my neighborhood, less units alleviates the parking problem. I recognize that it doesn't allow for as extensive a profit, but we're talking about also the value and the quality of the people, of the lives of the people who already are living in that neighborhood. Centerville is a very dense neighborhood. Gentlemen, we are a proud, hardworking, blue collar community. We do not want to see development never come to our neighborhood, but we'd like to see development come to our neighborhood that benefits us as people who have lived there for a number of years, myself included, and also the developers who are proposing these units. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, gentlemen, members of the planning board. I'm Bill Flanagan. I live at 67 Bonham Street, which is in Centerville. I think the proponents of this plan have misjudged the conditions of the site. In counter to what Mr. Gary said, the parking situation on-street is very difficult. I don't know what hours of the day that he toured West Sixth Street, but in the early evening, in the early morning hours, especially when the Greenhenge School is in session, it's a terrible situation. The on-street situation on West Sixth Street and adjacent streets are terrible, and with schoolchildren going to and fro the schools, it's terrible. There's no open spaces on West Sixth Street from Bunker Hill down past the area of this planned development. And to say that there's open spaces is ludicrous, and I disagree with Mr. Gary in his comments. If you look at the site plan that they presented, there's no room really for parking on the site and dumpsters and parking area for the snow removal and snow during the winter. And just to have 19 spaces on-site without taking those considerations into play, I think to allow them only 19 spots is insufficient. And I, as a taxpayer in the city of Lowell, it'd be putting a great demand on city services, especially for snow removal going up and down the streets and just public safety. So, I for one would be against this proposal and all the variances that they're asking for. I've attended two public meetings in the Greenhenge School, and what they presented is not acceptable to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Just to get the petition, send it all over, make sure all the board members see it before I comment on it. There you go. You take a look at those pictures, then.
Can I ask just one quick question?
Sean, just give me one second, okay?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that the other board members get to see the pictures that you submitted and the petition that you submitted.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have some.
Yeah, just give me one second, okay?
Okay.
I just want the board members to have a chance to look at, digest that, and then So, at this point, I'll go back to Ms. McNamara, then I'll go to Attorney Gary, okay?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
In any brand-new development, does there have to be handicap accessible? Just a question.
There should be handicap spots, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes, there should be handicap spots.
That's what I thought, but I don't see any in their plans. That's why I just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
I think there's.
Because handicap is important.
I think, come on, we got one.
Right, correct.
Yeah, there's one on the site, Ms. McNamara. Right up close to the building where it obviously should be, yeah.
Okay, good.
You seen one, yeah.
Yep.
Mr.
I'll take a peek.
Fisher pointed that out, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
May I take a shot?
Sure, go ahead, please, Sean. Yeah.
So, with the intended people, the tenants are supposed to be young professionals?
I don't know. They haven't said that to me.
Well, I guess it's the intention.
It hasn't been presented to us. I don't know what's presented to the neighborhood association and what they've told you and what the costs are. We've never heard any of that, so, to be honest with you, I have no idea.
With the costs, it makes sense to me that it would be young professionals that would want to live there.
I don't know.
Are largely working from home, largely trying to abandon their cars. Nobody wants to drive if they don't have to. I think that it's pretty reasonable to assume that a significant number of people are not going to need those parking spaces.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Attorney Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I haven't had the opportunity to see the pictures that are circulating, but we also have some pictures of our own that we would like to circulate, if that's okay?
I can just let you know that we've been up to the site, like we always have.
Yeah.
Mr. Fisher was here today, I was there yesterday. I know the other board members have been there at different times, so the pictures are helpful, depending on what time you've been there. But obviously, when parties come before us, we do our diligence and we do go visit the sites.
Understood.
So, pictures are helpful, but nothing better than being on-site, even if it's in my own neighborhood, the next street over, I still go, put my car there, walk around. If any neighbors are there, I talk to them, because you can drive by it 100 times until you get out of your car and walk it. So, yesterday, I walked the whole site. When I'm on the one-way streets, tried to make sure I didn't go down the wrong way to one-way streets, but I'm not going to say anymore about that. And I get out, and I walked all around the site. So, but yeah, so we, I mean, the pictures are helpful, but like I say, it's very helpful for us. And I know with some of the new board members came on, their comments was to me, "Mr. Linehan, you've been here a long time. What do you recommend? Visit the site. I don't care where it is, go visit the site. You'll see more than even if you drive by it to go to work every single day. Once you get out and walk around, you see a little bit more." So, Mr. Gary, I'll show you his pictures, and what was presented was a petition from Ms. McNamara. Ms. McNamara from, it looks like most of the people live right in the neighborhood with 108 signatures again. It looks like most of them are on, and I can show, you'll be entitled to see those, obviously. Most of them are on either the Bovet Street or West Sixth Street. Yeah, like 90% of them, so. You can see those, and we'll take any pictures you have. Attorney Gary, you can see those, and we'll make sure those are. Can you pass these down? One for you, Richard. Angel Russell, if you don't mind. Richard.
There you go. Oh, okay, good.
There you go. So with these pictures, Attorney Gary, do you want to add anything to the pictures or just for my consideration, or do you want to say anything?
I'll just, I certainly will concede that it's a dense neighborhood and parking is a premium. I think the pictures that we have provided also demonstrate that there is some open on-street parking. Otherwise, I'll reserve the rest of my comments until the board has a chance to comment.
Okay. At this time, I'd just ask, could you comment on Ms. Maddy Candy's questions about keeping the fence and how you'd control the in-and-out traffic flow?
Yes, so we intend to control the in-and-out traffic flow by signage on the ground. We could put signage at the beginning of, you know, the access point and the egress point. The residents will have information regarding that.
Not in the lease.
It will be in the lease. So it's, you know, it's not an unmanageable task. There aren't, you know, we're talking 19 units. It's not an unmanageable task to keep that under control. So we feel we can control that, and it makes, you know, it makes sense, it's logical. You know, as far as the, this is not about the almighty dollar, but it's about the economics of the project. We're dealing with a seller that, you know, we've negotiated a price point, we've, you know, put the numbers to pencil, and we're, you know, we were hoping to do more than 19. 19 is our, really our low point. So it's not about the almighty dollar, but we have to make the project work, and it's, I think the benefits of restoring this building and stabilizing it for decades to come go a long way.
And what about the fence issue that?
I'm sorry, the fence. So, you know, we could certainly consider a fence along the street. I think the land, you know, we're going to have some trees there. The landscaping seems to make more sense to me, but, you know, we, you know, we wouldn't propose a chain-link fence for sure, but something that can certainly be considered if that's the board's wish. You know, one other comment, as far as the number of units, so, you know, if we were to, for example, do four units per floor, four two-bedroom units per floor, we would have 24 bedrooms. If we were to, you know, right now, we're proposing 19 units with 27 bedrooms because we have a handful of studio apartments and we have six one-bedroom apartments. So again, we feel that the target demographic for the tenant, for any prospective tenants, will be such that, you know, the parking will be manageable.
Thank you. If this, if nobody else had anything further to say, I will turn it over to the board members. Do the board members have questions, comments?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, Mr. Lockhart?
Chairman, the transportation demand management plan, we have it right up here that you submitted. Could you just verbalize that, and in particular, the bike racks? And, you know, I noticed on at least the plan that I have, it's not delineated very clearly, it's just, you know.
Right, so the.
I think we need, I would like to see a little bit more detail, but it just.
So we, on the site plan, we show the bike rack to the right of the front entrance of the property.
Right.
We're also going to be proposing a bike rack on the interior, but as far as the transportation demand management plan, that's something that the boards have been requiring as of late. The idea is to show other modes of transportation, micro-mobility solutions. In this case, it's bicycles, it's the LRTA, and it's the rideshare programs that are readily available.
Right.
You know, we're not, we're not in the heart of downtown, so the scooter share programs really don't work, but that's what we can offer in terms of alternative transportation.
How do you propose to make the residents of this facility aware of all these things? Do you have a plan? This is a very important concept, any of these.
So we designed efficient, smaller units tailored to, you know, young professionals working in and around the Merrimack Valley. I'd like to comment that, you know, we need to be mindful of who we rent the apartments to, because any parking issue that is created in the neighborhood is going to also be our parking issue. And I tried to stress that in the neighborhood meetings that we attended. Although we can't promise anything, we don't want family of four as our target customer. That's not who we're, you know, looking to rent to. And so, and so, you know, we're looking for young professionals that, and I think that, you know, in and around the area, bikes are becoming more popular. So as far as the parking plan and how we navigate through it, it will be detailed in our leases. The bike racks will be visible. The outdoor bike rack is right at the front of the building, and I believe Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but the bike rack that's inside the building is right, right off the stair wall in the main entrance, so you really can't miss it. And so I would just go back to, as a lifelong resident of the city who still lives in the city, takes pride in the city, and is trying to do my part, I'm not looking, we're not looking to create more issues, and we will be very mindful of who we lease to.
Yeah, I have one other question.
Sure, take your time, take your time.
This site plan that I have, our documentation, there's an eight-foot privacy fence in the upper left corner of the lot, and I'm just wondering about the materials and what that looks like.
Right, so I think the intent is to use a vinyl clad fence in the back. So this runs along the back of the street, at Bouleau Street, where the outdoor space for the tenants will be, and I think it comes back along to the side of the building as well.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. Did that answer your question?
What is the material? I'm sorry.
Vinyl panels.
Vinyl panels?
Yes.
Like a white vinyl?
Solid vinyl panels, yes.
All right. Another important thing, I know you're aware of the dumpster needs screening, but that be put in the right place. We're in a pretty dense neighborhood here, and you don't want to.
Correct. We can clearly identify that, you know, and the screening on any revised plan.
Yeah, that's good. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart. Any other board members' questions?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fisher?
Questions regarding the parking configuration. Another question was asked, you know, how to ensure that the flow will actually, you know, enter from West Sixth Street and come out onto Bovet. Have you considered angled parking? Because when you're, if you're coming in and it's angled, so when you're backing out, you know, it's almost impossible to back out and come onto West Sixth Street. You've got to come back out and head out towards Bovet. And because then, if we could even bring up the site plan, I have concerns about what was presented the last, oh, the first parking space on the left-hand side when you enter. If you were backing out, you'd have to back out into the sidewalk, even out probably into West Sixth Street to go.
I can, we did, we did look at angled parking with Mark O'Hara, our engineer, who unfortunately couldn't connect, and it's my understanding that by angling, we weren't gaining, there were no benefits to doing it. This seemed to be the best use.
The benefit I see is ensuring that when you come in, you know, you have to come in. If you come in from, let's say you come in from Bovet, you're not going to be able to park at the angle out towards West Sixth. When you come in from West Sixth and you park at the angle, it's going to be virtually impossible for you to back out, back out in the direction with a row of cars, angled cars behind you, to come back out onto West Sixth Street. So now we're directing the flow rather than a sign that says, you know, just one way.
Understood.
Because you know, the most underappreciated person in the world is a sign maker, right? Because the people don't follow those very well. So I think that would actually direct the flow.
Yeah, I think you're probably right about that, so we can certainly take a look at that. I just, I wouldn't want to lose any spaces because of the angled parking, because clearly it's at a premium.
Understood, and we can talk about that.
Yeah.
It'll get us in another direction, but I think that's paramount.
Yeah.
I think from a, to accomplish what we want to accomplish, you know, it's like with the Walgreens on Middlesex Street, we made sure that when you take a right coming out of there, it's got vertical granite curbing and it's got the stanchions, you cannot take a left and cross over three lanes of traffic to get onto Wood Street. Even if we had put a sign, we know what that would have been like. We just went with a sign on Westford Street where the Lowell Fishton Savings Bank is, no left-hand turn. I go to the Starbucks in Drumhill, Sunday morning, I see people taking left-hand turns all the time over there. So again, signs, it makes everybody feel maybe good that we put a sign up, but I think this would direct the flow.
Yeah, certainly something we can take a look at.
Okay, all right, good. And then I think, you know, to the chairman's point, and I think the residents should take heart that everybody on the board does its due diligence, and we visit the sites, and, you know, we do our best to make sure we understand what's on the ground. But we've run into this before and, you know, understanding that it is a congested neighborhood. But I did look at your photos, your photos looked the way I saw it today, but I do think it would warrant, and we've done this before, and we did at St. Jean de Baptist Church on Merrimack Street, where we have a off-street parking analysis that is performed, and then that way there, that will really tell us, we can, you know, I've been on your side, folks. I was the head of a neighborhood group for 10 years in Lowell, and I antecdotally had my strong opinions of what was going on, but I appreciate the input as what you're seeing every, you know, when you're there, but I think it's important to have an off-street parking analysis. We're really looking at data as to what's available.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and there's a lot of dynamics going on, as people mentioned, with the Greenhale School. I think that has to be looked at. Part of the analysis is during that time. I have to think this is what's being proposed. In many cases, though, would be less of an impact than what the school had over time at the site. I will comment, there was some comment about combined surge overflows, and that's surge over, combined overflows, runoff. This is actually going to help the site, what you're proposing here. It's less impervious surface. It is putting in not a lot, but some landscaping. I respect the idea of a fence, but I do think with landscaping, the, it can beautify the neighborhood if we do it right. And looking at some of the trees that are there in front of the church, and if you look further down the West Sixth Street, you'll actually see a street tree that's actually in the sidewalk. It's designed to accommodate the tree. I think there's some, there's some real benefits that we can gain, and really from a streetscape perspective, really beautify that particular area. And the zoning code tries to address that. We try to not have a sea of asphalt, right? And that was, that was all the rage at one time, is a sea of asphalt. And then we're trying to balance what's important, all right? Landscaping, we could landscape the heck out of this and eliminate 10 parking spots, but what's more important to the neighborhood, parking? So we're trying to balance it so we can have some aesthetic appeal to what's not there right now and accommodate the parking. I mean, it does equate, I will say, Attorney Gary, your figures and your proposal is absolutely correct. You're providing 24 parking spaces off-street. I will say, in our memo, it says 26 from DPD, so if anybody's looking at the material, that's wrong, it's 24, not 26. There are 27 bedrooms in all, when you count out, you know, the studio apartments, the one-bedroom and the two apartments. I did kind of do that count. We've done this throughout other areas of the city, and it's applied in other areas throughout the Commonwealth. When you're looking at this, and you're going for variance, is for the size of these units are so small, they are really not meant to accommodate families per se.
Correct, yeah.
And so certainly that is the intent by the, you know, just like we're talking about, hey, let's design the parking so that you're driving the way you want it to be, you're building it the way you want to attract tenants. And then with the biking, the bike option, that's still limited. At some point, I want to see the payoff on that with some real analysis over time, but obviously we're trying to incorporate that in new development that we're doing, along with the transportation management plan. It is an area to see where there's MBK, you know, bussing available. And I know it's amazing when you look at the price of the rents, but I dare you to find more affordable housing anywhere in the greater Lowell area. The rents are through the roof even in Lowell, but in the entire region. You look at the Section 8 vouchers that are being handed out for two, three, and four families in the city, and you'll boggle your mind, absolutely boggle your mind. It's the times we're in, and I, it's amazing, actually. So I really would like, you know, like to see a new plan with the parking.
Mm-hmm.
I think DPD had some really good suggestions on the landscape, and we do obviously want to, they did have that as an intended condition. I do want to see an off-street parking analysis conducted during various times and conditions. You know, this is always a challenge when we're talking about reuse of an existing building in the city of Lowell. We have mill buildings that we've, we've put on, backed on, you know, really on the tax rolls and made useful, affordable housing. And I don't see, let's not even say affordable housing. Lowell does something unique. We have affordable housing. We have housing that's affordable in the grand scheme of what's affordable, all right? What's affordable right now still bargles my mind, and then high-end housing. I dare you to point that out in a community in the greater Lowell area. Doesn't exist. So when we take these buildings and we try to reuse these, you know, I was looking at the zoning code, and Attorney Gary, you've mentioned this in the past with other projects. If we followed the zoning code to a T, code to a T, this could accommodate five units. Now, look at the building. That just doesn't make any sense. So, you know, how do we, how do we do this? Would we create more traffic if we had bigger units with more bedrooms? Would there be more parking demand versus, you know, this is what, this is what you, you know, you look at and trying to balance that. I'm not looking at it from an economic perspective, to be honest with you. My perspective is the economies, the economics of the city of Lowell, all right? So this was a nonprofit, the church wasn't paying any taxes. We can get it on the tax rolls, that's a good thing, but obviously we have to be sensitive to the neighborhood as well. Also, the, there was concern, I think it was mentioned by one of the speakers about crime, and unfortunately, I think as a result of COVID. I think as a result of COVID, tempers are a little bit higher with people, and triggers are a little bit more tight and sensitive. What I will tell you is that, and any police officer will tell you about the broken window syndrome. You have vacant buildings in a neighborhood, big vacant buildings. They cause harm, all right? And you're going to have more crime. And the longer that stays vacant, the greater potential you have of having some issues in the neighborhood. So those are all things to balance, you know? I think the concerns that were brought forward, we like to hear that. We need to hear that, from your perspective. And then we need to really take a look at it, go back, look at it from a, I think it's important to have an analysis of the off-street parking availability. And, you know, if that doesn't look like it's there, you know, maybe we do have to look at reducing a few units. You know, maybe you look at putting a common space within the building to use that, to make it more attractive for young professionals, perhaps, and amenity, some amenity that goes with the building. That would be useful, that would reduce a few units, make it more attractive. So again, put some ideas in your head. Obviously, from my thoughts, we need to do a little bit more work and come back with this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fischette. Caleb, any questions, comments?
Oh, yes, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would concur with Member Fischette. I acknowledge also the parking concerns. But I do believe that with proper transportation demand management measures, and also targeting the civic population will help alleviate the parking demand. So regarding the transportation demand management, I appreciate that you prepared one, so that you already start to address the parking concerns. And I think one comment I have on that is that I appreciate that there will be bike racks. And, not that you're not, not that you are doing it one way or another, but just a comment that like, please consider both convenience and security for the bike users as well, when you, and how you locate the bike racks. Because bike racks there is not safe, not convenient, would not be used. And then people might not bike, but drive instead. So please consider that, and so that the bike rack is not an afterthought. And also, I will think that I agree with Member Fischette that a off-street parking analysis will help us to gauge, you know, whether these are effective, these measures are working down the line, so that we can make adjustments, maybe to address any problems that we might, we might have down the line if parking become an issue. So I appreciate the applicant's effort into addressing this. And I understand it's a challenging site. And I appreciate the effort put into trying to rehabilitate this building. And that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Caleb. Russell, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Chairman. I had a question about, the applicant referenced an interior bike storage. And what you said you were proposing, would that be in the, that entry stairway before that first entry stair? So just from those double doors, or after those double doors?
Yes, that is correct. The original design of the school comes in, and stairways play up on both sides of the school. So we technically don't need both stairwells, according to the code. So we will be putting, you know, taking away one end of the stairwell, putting in some bike racks, as well as some other storage inside of the units for people to possibly rent, you know, or just put their Christmas devices, things like that, you know, so.
Okay, okay. I would just like to echo Member Chang's concerns about just making sure if, to address some of the parking concerns here, making sure the transportation demand management plan isn't an afterthought, making sure that the bike storage is safe, secure. It will be, it'll be better utilized in that way.
Yep.
I had another question in general. I think it's a great use for the, or great reuse for the building in general, is housing. I think there are a lot of concerns about parking here that need to be addressed. And I think that an off-street parking analysis would be helpful to address those, and so the members can have a better understanding of what is the actual demand for the off-street parking in the neighborhood at various times during the week. I had one question about how you would be, are parking, were you planning to assign off-street parking to specific residents? Or is that going to be sort of first come, first served?
No, we would assign.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, Chairman.
Thank you, Russell. I believe we have one board member, Mr. Malavich on Zoom.
Yes.
Bob, you with us, any questions?
Yeah, I don't have questions, but I really agree with everything that's been said so far. In fact, I kept scratching off things on my list of things to say. But I, I think we need the off-street parking study in the first place. But I think the size of the units are going to really determine, I'm talking about the square footage, are really going to determine who's going to rent those spaces. And there may be less than two cars per housing unit that occupies that site. I also... No, that's it, that's it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, Chairman, may I add a comment?
Sure, go ahead, Caleb.
I think I just remember, Member Fischette also mentioned about the fence versus landscaping. I would prefer landscaping, but if they are dense enough to stop the cars from cutting through, it will be more preferable than a fence, in my opinion.
Yeah, there's a vertical granite curb along the streets. I mean, I understand cars could come over the curb and cause problems, but it's probably less likely with that type of curbing.
Anything further, Caleb?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Attorney Gary, anything you want to say as a result of what the board members have?
Well, I would just, you know, again, with regard to the parking, we have, again, we have 24 spaces. So we have at least one space for each unit, and some units will have two spaces for. You know, as we've mentioned, and a few board members have mentioned, we believe that the size of the units will dictate our tenant. And, you know, we believe that we can handle the, whatever potential parking problems are there, and that will be, there'll be fairly small increase to the off-street parking situation in the neighborhood from this development. I understand there's an existing problem. We're not going to make that problem much worse, in our view.
When do you go before the Zoning Board of Appeals? Do you have a date on that?
We do. We're before the Zoning Board on the 25th, Monday. So...
This Monday coming?
Yes, so the, just the way the calendar flowed. It was, you know, we would have been put out a month if we tried to do it reverse. You know, we could consider continuing that, dealing with a few of the issues that we talked about tonight, and then coming back here then to the, you know, we can certainly consider that, yeah.
Okay, so what's the request of the board? You want to act on the proposal this evening? You want to give continuation to see if we can have the parking study performed for off-street parking with other comments that have been addressed to board members? Give the applicant opportunity to come back and at least have the... It sounds like most of the board members would obviously feel a lot more company, I'm a lot more comfortable having an off-street parking study. I think that would answer a lot of questions for a lot of us.
Chairman?
Yes, Caleb?
Have we talked about stormwater, or that's addressed?
Sure, you can talk about, yeah.
So maybe, Mr. Gary, you can update us on where you are at stormwater team?
Stormwater, is that?
Yes.
Yes, so the, you know, in conferring with our engineer this evening, he said there's no need to, we're make, the lot is, we're at least 10% less impervious pavement, so we're not adding anything to the, we're decreasing the runoff. So there's, there's no need to address the stormwater. And I don't believe that the stormwater management team weighed in, which they typically do if it's a concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So if it's acceptable to the board, we would like to request a continuance.
Okay. How far out are you looking? And we can check with our calendar. Let's see, let me just double-check here for one second. Janey, do you, can you check to see what we have coming up in the next couple of, well, let me just take a look here first.
The next meeting is May 2nd, and then the one after that is May 16th.
Okay. I'm trying to think, do you know how many? Well, May 2nd might not be enough time since we're...
No, so, Mr. Chairman, it may take us, it may take us six weeks to get this done, six to eight weeks. So maybe we go out to the third meeting?
Okay, so that would be June 6th?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, anybody, any other board members want to put that in the form of a motion for a continuance to 6/6?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the petition to the June 6, 2022 Planning Board meeting.
I'll start a motion.
Okay, so a motion on the floor and second to continue the matter to June 6th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote ayes. Any opposition? Hearing none, that motion is allowed. I want to thank everybody for their input. So this is a continuation of a meeting. So we come back June 6th. We pick up where we left off. We don't start over again like a three-inning baseball game that got rained out. So we just keep the continuation flowing. But obviously, any new comments would be appreciated. But we don't have to hear all the new ones, the old ones, they're in. And we, does any, Ms. McMillan, do you want your pictures back? If not, we can keep them for the record. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll keep those on file for the record, and we'll have those. And if we have any comments to refer to them, we can always refer back to them. So thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, counsel. I'll just give it a second here before we keep going on. I'll see if I have comments, Attorney Gary?
Yeah?
Yeah, we do a lot of...
Could be carrying more prints on that.
A lot of PT involved?
Started, started next week.
You got to stick with it for it to work, but it's beneficial.
I have a lot of incentives.
Oh, yeah, it's, sometimes people give up too soon. You're like, no, you got to keep going.
It won't be easy.
I tore my hamstring off the bone last year skiing, so I was on PT for three months. No.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Okay, moving along on the agenda. We have any comments from any other board members? Any board members have any updates?
One quick note about the historic board. We did not meet on our April 11th published date. We had no public hearing scheduled, so we canceled that meeting. Our next meeting is on May 9th.
Thank you. Any other board members have any comments?
Chairman, I'd like to make a comment that, so unfortunately, this will actually be my last Planning Board meeting as an associate member. I am not going to be a Lowell resident as of May 1st, so...
Sorry to hear that, Russell.
Yeah, me too. My, my, my personal life has sort of pulled me away from Lowell, so... But I have very much enjoyed being an associate member on the Planning Board. I've learned a lot. And I am very much looking forward to taking the knowledge that I have now and really being a citizen planner in communities where I live in.
Good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your work on behalf of the city. And thank you for being here with us, and we really enjoyed having you.
Yeah.
A little different sometimes sitting on this side than that side.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I remember Jeffrey Dirk being here a couple of times saying, "I envy you guys, I wouldn't want to be making your decisions." He goes, "It's easy to make a presentation, but a lot harder to digest and make the decision." But yeah, well, good luck, we wish you well.
Thank you.
But then again, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, if not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
The main second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, vote ayes. No, have no opposition, hearing none, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody, thank you very much.
Oh, so you're going to be a regular, you're going to be the public. You're going to be the public, yes.
Take care, thank you.